Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our November, the second November meeting of the Planning Board. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm sorry? We're fine. Okay. Good evening, everybody. We are going to start off. Are there any items of correspondence? I haven't seen any, anything come in? Nothing? Thank you. Let's proceed to the minutes of the November 8th meeting. Any comments or corrections, gentlemen?
None here, no.
Motion, please?
Motion. Second?
All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. In our regular session, the first item on tonight's agenda is a decision statement on the application of Bird Bus Sales and Service for a site plan approval at 3805 Crampon Road. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Dumont with JMC. Also with me tonight is Robert Reichenbach, Vice President of Bird Bus Sales. Since we were last before you, we've made a couple of changes to the plans. The main thing that was changed was we added landscaping along the site's Route 202 frontage, as we had discussed with you at the last meeting. We incorporated some low-growing grasses and shrubs in the island areas along 202. There is a bus stop, a beeline bus stop, that we had to work around, but we were able to do so. We've also met with the planning department to work out the final site plan details, mainly focusing on the lighting and the landscaping. And we've also met with the Ibaka, and we believe we've worked out the final details of the building architecture. So, tonight, there's a draft resolution before you for your consideration. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but it's our hope that you would consider acting on the resolution tonight.
Have you reviewed the resolution yourself?
We have.
And the text is acceptable to you?
It is.
And the changes you made on the landscaping, have they been reviewed by anybody?
Yes, they have. Planning Department has reviewed them, and we've also discussed them with the Ibaka.
Okay. Have any questions? Anything from staff or council on this?
No, I have no changes to the decision statement.
I just have one maybe typo, I think, to the decision statement, which is on page four of four. The second resolve, these existing light foundations along 202 that are noted on the site plan to remain utilized will not be utilized. I think that's an extra utilized, so I'm suggesting removing the utilize that comes after the word "remain." So, it says noted on the site plan to remain will not be utilized without an amended lighting plan approved by the Planning Board.
That's fine.
Gotcha.
Right? Okay. Anything else?
Go ahead.
Did we do a lead agency on this yet? Or is that tonight?
That's in this resolution here.
Okay. That's in the negative declaration? All right. Do I have a motion to, I guess, declare ourselves a lead agency on this matter?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a adoption of a negative declaration on this project?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And finally, adoption of the approving resolution as modified just before.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. It was a pleasure working with you on this. Hope to see you.
You as well. Take care.
I'd just like to say, Robert Reichenbach from Bird Bus Sales. I just want to say thank you very much. We look forward to doing business and growing Yorktown together. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda in our regular session is the Mariel School of New York at St. Andrews Lutheran Church. This is also on the agenda for a decision statement. This property is located at 2405 Crampon Road. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Do you prefer to pastor the church?
I'm Salin, the head of the school.
Okay. Did you get a chance to review the resolution on your application? Do you have any comments, or is it acceptable to you with the conditions?
Yes.
Good. Any comments from the board?
None.
Staff, council?
We're good.
No changes to the decision statement.
Okay, good. So, at this point, we have before us a resolution approving the school at St. Andrews Church. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess that's it.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Have a good day.
The next item is, has been before us for some time, and we are trying to move things forward on this application. This is a, the Par III golf course application, and we are moving to, tonight, to resume an adjourned public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, John. So, update us.
All right, so, yeah, really making some progress on the course, putting in some trees and looking into mitigation along the bank there where the water ditch is. You had a question at the last meeting with what we're going to put along the bank, and after reviewing it with our partners, they're looking to put in landscaping, fieldstone, oriental grass, as well as swamp milkweed.
Okay. Now, this is going, you'll submit this, you know, in some sort of a memo to us, because I believe it differs from what was presented earlier. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, we just want the record to reflect your latest thinking, where you are and what you're intending to do. Are there any other comments that you would like to make at this point?
My memo will also include where we're putting the protective trees in the course as well, because that needs to be updated as well.
Okay. Very good.
I could tell you, I was over there a couple of days ago, and, boy, that looks great. The grass is really green and really coming in good. Can't wait to get out there.
There's more sodding there today. They sodded some other area today, so it's hard.
Looks, it really looks terrific.
Growing will be a little easier now with the sod down. The greens are going to roll and stuff, and, but, you know, moving along, hopefully we get through this and, you know.
Yeah. The teas and greens are pretty much all done, just a little bit more sod down on the sixth hole, and you'll have a course.
Bring your five iron out there.
Still shooting to open early spring?
That's what they're shooting for, yes.
Hopefully.
Okay.
All righty.
All right. Any other comments?
Nope.
Comments from staff or attorney at this point? Then let me open the public hearing, gentlemen. Why don't you yield the floor? If there's anyone who would like to speak on this matter, please step forward. We did take comments at previous hearings, and they are part of the record. So, is there anyone else who wishes to speak or add anything tonight? All right? I see no one. That's fine. So, having opened the hearing again, I think at this point, we should close the hearing. We can hold it open for any written comments that may come in on the latest information that the applicant is going to present. And then I would suggest that we take a discussion when our full membership is present, which would probably be the next meeting in December. That's okay? I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion opposed. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, the hearing is closed. What we'll do is we'll review everything. When our full complement of board members are available, we'll have a discussion, and hopefully that will lead to the next step in the process. Okay? So, thank you very much for coming tonight. And that completes our regular session. We'll now go into the work session portion of the agenda. The first item on that agenda is a discussion of the site plan application for the Granite Knolls Park Solar Project. Is there anyone here on that application tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Eric Redding with Bergman. We're the engineers on the project. And since the last meeting, we've submitted additional revised materials to the board addressing the comments we received from the Recreation Commission, as well as the Planning Board from the last month's meeting. We've added additional details to the plans, and we've also addressed any of the comments from the letter that we received from the Recreation Commission. I did want to touch upon three items that are kind of like a larger change to the plans. So, we did add a driveway to the plans, as well as the grading, and it's coming off of the east side of the project, off of Stony Street. It's a 20-foot-wide, limited-use pervious gravel driveway, and at the end of it, there's a hammerhead turnaround area. And we maintained a 10% max slope on the driveway, and then the hammerhead allows for access to the interconnection utility poles, which is required by the utility company. And then the second change was we've added level spreaders, two-foot-wide gravel level spreaders at the drip edge of all of the ground-mounted solar panels in the field, as well as we've added them parallel to the contours every 50 feet going down the hill. And what that does is allow, prevents erosion from occurring, and then it maintains the sheet flow condition going down the hill towards Stony Street. And then the third change was we took a look at the tree clearing limits, and we determined we'll have to clear 30,000 square feet of trees to prevent shading on the system, and that will mostly be to the south and east of the solar array. In addition, we've provided the cut sheets for the battery energy storage system, as well as the solar panel. And I just want to note that those are typical cut sheets. They might not be the exact model that we use for this particular project. It's always dependent on market availability, shipping, cost, things like that, but we always provide something substantially similar to those equipment cut sheets. So, for tonight, we'd request the board to declare their intent to seek lead agency and schedule a public hearing for next month. It'd be good, I think, to circulate our package around to solicit as many comments and feedback as possible at this time. And then from the board, we would request any feedback on the tree mitigation plan that we'll be preparing, if there's anything specific that the board would like to see or any requirements. And then if the board would require a photo simulation of the project site, and if there's any specific vantage points the board would like us to do that from.
You show us where, is this driveway now an additional access to the site over and above what's already there?
Yes, that is correct.
Where is that?
Yep, so it's right where the hand is, along the right there. You see where it kind of curls in?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so that would be the driveway right there. And then our interconnection poles is right on the south end of that, going from east to west, and there'll be about three to four interconnection poles there with different equipment on it. That's going to be specified by ConEd. Yep, and as mentioned at the last meeting, there was a concern with steep slopes coming off of there. So, we took a hard look at that, and off of, you see the gravel area to the west of the array, right off of that, that is the steep area. It drops off pretty steeply there, so our panels start right as it starts to flatten out there. And then the percentage slope throughout the array area is around 15% plus or minus. There's some flatter areas, and then there's a couple of areas that were a little steeper than that, and that is constructable for solar arrays.
The interconnection poles that you're referring to?
Yep.
Is that new equipment, or is there existing equipment there?
Yep, it'll be all-new equipment. So, there's different equipment that they require, like reclosers and transformers and things like that, to protect the grid from our system, so.
Sounds good to me. No questions.
Any comments from you, John?
Well, I think we have to look a little bit into, a little bit more deeply into any view sheds situations, in particular for the array that's ground-mounted, not the canopy system necessarily. I think we need to look into the canopy system, but the ground mount is obviously something that can be screened to a certain extent and should be screened. The canopy is a little bit of a different situation. Also, I believe that the current regulation as written limits the height in residential zones to 15 feet, including canopies.
Mm-hmm.
So, that may need to be a variance that has to be granted from the zoning board. We'll have to look into it a little bit.
Yeah. I think the top of our canopies will be over 15 feet slightly. I think it'll be closer to around 17 or 18 feet.
Are you going to have clearance underneath for the typical 14 and 1/2-foot, you know, truck or something like that?
Yep, yep. So, the fire code stipulates 13 and 1/2 feet, I believe, so we are providing that.
Okay. Okay, and just procedurally, if you are going to schedule a hearing, you'll have to vote yourself into regular session, and then schedule the hearing at the regular session.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and I would just say not to drag it out, but you may want to get a little bit more information on the view shed and site sections and any necessary landscaping before you get into a public hearing. I don't know if you'll be able to do that, but, you know, depending on when, if you schedule it, what, the actual night that you schedule it for.
Well, we only have one meeting in December, right? I think that's a little...
December?
Things that need to be talked about.
We got December 6th and December 20th.
Oh, you have two, two? Okay.
Work session on the 20th, and the 6th is regular.
I want there to be adequate time for these materials to be reviewed by our different agencies, and also to take up the issues that were just raised in terms of the view shed. Now, in some of the applications we've done, we, you know, people put balloons out and cite them from different areas. I know that I can see the lights, the lighting from that field can be seen far and wide.
From New York City.
New York City? That'll be tough.
But whether or not the panels can be seen at night, or even during the daytime, I don't know, but that's something that we need to take into account. So, is that something that we can, you can study or provide information on that between now and, say, the second meeting in December?
Yeah, we definitely can, and it's just a matter of what the board's looking for. If photo sims, you know, taking photos along, say, Stony Street and analyzing that with vegetation along the frontage there, that can certainly be done. And then with any other tests or anything like that, if you have any more direction on that, we might be able to work that in.
Well, I think also the simulations, the photo simulations are great, but also what's very telling is the site sections, site line sections.
Okay, yep.
So, it's from various points, line of sight, to the highest point of, you know, different, you know, the canopy and the ground array to see what you can see without any obstruction. This way, you can actually design your screening to be more effective in the areas that it makes sense to do it.
Yeah.
So, those are helpful, and we can go through what those vantage points can be.
Okay.
The other thing is if you wanted to do some sort of balloon test to see if you can see the highest, which I think in this case may be the highest point of his ground array, and maybe two, two points or so on the canopy. I think that may cover where you may be able to see the stuff from.
Okay.
If at all, so.
Gotcha.
But I think to the chairman's point, or acting chairman's point, there, we can see the lights and the light standards from a couple of spots around, and would have to see relatively where the tops of those canopy, canopies are relation to that. You may be able to see it, and it'd be good to know if you can see it.
Okay.
To see if measures can be taken to help it a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd work with you to...
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we can do that before the December 20th meeting.
Should we set that meeting up now, the hearing?
Yeah, I think we should.
I think so.
It's your choice. There's no reason not to set it unless you're worried you won't have enough time to review all the materials, because it sounds like you've got a lot of work between now and the public hearing.
Yeah, there's a decent amount of work, but I think we can get it done, you know, early December.
Sure.
You know, say, the...
December 6th.
A week or so into December.
Yeah, of course. So, what are we looking at, the 6th of December or the 20th?
I was thinking the 20th might give us a little more leeway on this. Are you on this project?
Parks and Rec Commission liaison for this project, so I'd love to finish with that. I just wouldn't mind if you gave a couple of minutes.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
And when's the January meeting?
January 10th.
I'm sorry?
January 10th. So, it's January 10th.
Is that what, we're shooting for January?
Would you prefer January? Okay. So, yeah, we'd prefer January then. That'll give us a little extra time and a little more opportunity to review.
Okay. So, do we have to do anything at this, at this early juncture?
We have to vote to set the here. I guess you could wait till your next meeting to schedule it.
And how about a referral, the referral out to different agencies at this point? That we should do?
Yeah.
We're going to send that anyway.
Yes.
It's standard.
Next speaker.
It's going to be done? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Do they have to declare their intent, or no?
Usually you don't, so.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering. I didn't know the procedure.
Okay. Very good.
You mentioned 30,000 square feet of tree removal, or?
Yes.
So, has a tree survey been done? Is there a...
Not yet. So, that will be done. We did go out there and take a preliminary look at the trees, but not, an arborist didn't look at it yet. But we will have an arborist out there to mark the trees, take inventory of all the trees, and then we'd provide the tree mitigation plan. Good.
Okay. So, I guess in that case, you know, the January date makes sense.
Makes sense, yeah.
You've got a number of things to do.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So, okay, that works. Anything else?
Anything else?
That's it.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
January meeting, what percentage of plans are you going to have? You need to step up to the microphone.
Come up.
Sorry. There's a question, Red. Yep. So, Patrick Kaminski, Vice Chair, Parks and Rec Commission. So, I was before you guys with the initial comments. First question is the percentage of drawings right now. What are you going to have by January?
January will probably be close to 85, 90 percent.
Okay, so a lot further than this.
Yeah, yeah. So, we will have construction drawings.
Can't talk from there.
Yeah. Yes, I would say right now, we have about 60% or so. By January, we'll probably have a little bit closer to 85, 90% plus or minus on the drawings. We aren't going to have, you know, a full construction set prior to, you know, our permit set. There's still going to be during the construction drawings, some tweaks here and there with the electrical design and things like that, which will be forthcoming, but we would stay, you know, within any approvals, you know, thresholds or anything like that that is put forth by the Planning Board.
So, your construction documentation for this approval will be at what percentage of a construction document set that's buildable?
Oh, for this, 90% is what we typically bring it to.
We'll be approving here 90% construction doc, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's typically what we'll do at that point. And then for the building permit, we'd obviously issue the full construction-level documents, and then if there, we're not anticipating any major changes after the 90%, however, if there are any major changes, we'd bring it before the board, of course, but if there's, you know, we generally don't see any major changes like that, so.
Okay.
I guess I would have a little bit of a difference in the percentage of what's complete, but I'm not going to get into semantics. The, just real quick, since you got that picture up before I go, I'm not going to go through every little by line. I'll send you guys another email like I did last time with my comments, just to make it easier for everybody that's here. For that, my two concerns are that a green shaded area is wetlands, so just, I don't know what else is over there. I think that's a part of the survey that has to be done, is whether you're disturbing the wetlands or the buffer. Where he's pointing the battery storage systems at, I don't see how we're getting access to that with emergency vehicles, should there be a fire, which is my biggest concern with the whole battery storage system there. And I didn't see a battery storage for the panels, the carport array. So, I was just curious if that all goes back to that one battery storage area, or if there's going to be a second area. So, anyway, general overview for you guys. The, I'm sure like everybody else read in the paper that the town board is considering a moratorium on solar projects. Does this fall under that moratorium, or since it's already been approved by the commission, the board, the state?
There isn't under that.
This is good?
There's no moratorium as of yet, and it would not affect anyone that's already gone to this.
So, this wouldn't affect, be affected by that moratorium? That's good news. Thank you. Review process, was just asking about at what point, because one of the answers to the questions I had was that this is schematic for like a site plan type of thing. My question was the same one. When are we going to actually get drawings to measure details? Just an example, again, it talks about map utilities. Still doesn't have any of the utilities built under the program, so our contract that we put out. So, just making sure, I know it sounds good, we're going to avoid everything, but I've been working on the rail, in a rail yard for the last three years. I can't spit without hitting a wire, so I'm kind of sensitive to that. Biggest issues that the Parks and Rec Commission is going to continue to have, like I said earlier, it's the schedule. So, right now, the previous version, they had four months on one answer or six months on the other. This one, they clarified six months, plus or minus. Six months does not work for the Parks and Rec Commission. We cannot shut this facility down for six months. So, my suggestion to the Planning Board, and more than welcome to help you if you need help to develop contract drawings and specifications that require the contractor to work, November to March is what we need him to work. That's what, that's the least impact we're going to have. It spills over somewhere. Going to have to have LDs for somebody that's late. It's going to have to be managed on the schedule, but they got to work double shifts, weekends. I don't know what it's going to be, but we definitely cannot shut down this entire facility for six months. At least let me know if you're going to, so I can quit and Matt can deal with all, everybody coming there. The, one thing that came to light for me, and maybe you guys are aware of this before I was, the, in response to one of the questions I had about maintenance, it was said that the system owner was going to be responsible for maintenance. So, I'd be, I thought, I thought you guys were the system owner. I don't know if you're a developer, I guess. So, the question I have, you know, stems back to everything again. Who owns maintaining this thing when there's an issue? Who owns decommissioning this at the end of the day? So, those are, I thought that was all part of this original deal. If it's not, and there's a different owner for this, I think we need a little bit more clarity into how that whole, the deal we have with, I can't remember your name.
Hesk.
Hesk Solar versus whoever's going to be the actual owner of this. So, this is going to be, you know, contracted out or sublet out or assigned, or whatever that's going to be, whatever deal we have with them. And then, again, the bigger issues I have is maintaining any issues we have up here, and then what happens at the end of it when the batteries are dead and this thing is out of, out of age and the newest solar systems are around. Who takes this apart? Who takes this apart? Who owns that? So the rest of the minor comments I'll have, I'll send you guys an email for.
Yeah, put the comments in writing. I mean, that's what we're at at the process right now, is to solicit input such as yours from all of the involved agencies that, you know, help us review these projects, okay? And we're not making any decisions on this. We're gonna try to flush out these issues, make sure that they're answered satisfactorily as we go forward. At some point, there'll be a public hearing, so we'll get additional input from the public. But we're at the point now where what we're trying to do is to identify the areas of concern of different interested parties and, of course, the members of the board here. So that's what we're looking forward to getting you to address as we move forward. Okay? All right. Any other comments, gentlemen?
None.
Good. All righty, then we have an idea of where we're going and how we're gonna get there, right?
Definitely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next in line in our never-ending solar energy quest and for alternative sources of energy is the Yorktown Energy Storage Tier Two Battery Storage System. This is amended plan, I believe. There's some changes, gentlemen. This site is thirty-nine zero one Gomer Street. We previously approved it, and you're in for some, something new. Good evening.
It's actually something less. Robert Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Conway, representatives of the company. Mr. Gibbons does the site plan, Mr. Conway.
Hold up a second. Take your discussion outside, please.
Mr. Conway has appeared before you in the past. Basically, we were approved last December. We've worked through the bonding issue with town attorney's office. We worked through the final site plan, which was signed by the board. I believe we received that back in September. We're getting ready to go more towards the building permit stage. And basically, more modern technology, we were able to shrink down. If you remember, we had four big containers. Now they're standalone systems. They're lower in height, less ground space. We thought it was important to show it on the plans and come back for a revised plan rather than having shown you a different layout and then have a different layout when we go to the building department. So really, by way of transparency, that's why we submitted the revised materials. And we're hoping just to have the revised plan approved.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Look, we went through all this. We don't wanna take a shortcut at the end.
So where are we at on this then? What do we need to do?
Need to amend.
We have to draw up?
Yeah, so can you explain in detail the differences?
Yeah, I think it might be easier if I could have Greg do it.
Yeah.
He's the engineer on the site plan.
Thanks, Rob. Yep, Greg Gibbons, civil engineer in the project, took over from Mel, who I think had been here before. Yeah, like Rob said, I mean, we started permitting this over two years ago. Since then, Borrego has switched to Fluent's grid stack because I preferred standalone storage system. We think it's a, we know it's an improvement and a better technology, specifically safety related. They, you know, it's an isolated cube system. There's twenty-four individual cubes now compared to the, I think it was five, was it five? Containers or four? But they reduce the amount of batteries in each cube. Then each cube has its own safety system. Got, they all, each have their own alarm or detect, heat detector, fire detector, smoke detectors, alarm system. They have their own HVAC system, and they have their own fire suppression system. So if there's any one of them starts getting hot or anything like that, they could isolate that particular cube and deal with it in a more specific way. Something that did come up previously, from what I hear from Mel, was the actual fire suppression agent. Before, we would propose using Novec twelve thirty, which was actually a liquid. And then the new agent that Fluent uses is called StatX. It's a compressed aerosol solid, similar to like if you see, if you've ever seen at a gas station or something, there's that white powder. That will only come out inside of the cube. It will never be released into the air or anything like that. So it stays within the cube entirely. It is EPA approved. It's listed as non-toxic. It's NFPA approved. You know, there's not much to be, I guess, worried about, anything leaking out or anything like that. It just won't happen.
Red, the height, is the height lower?
The height, yep. The height is reduced from thirteen feet to nine and a half feet, which I know was a big deal from views. So that will be significantly less visible. The fence area has reduced from fourteen thousand eight hundred approximately to ten thousand two hundred approximately. The impervious area has decreased from thirty-six hundred square feet to thirty-four hundred square feet. In general, it's just, it's a denser system. It's improved. And it's our preferred system, so we wanted to change the site to the Fluent grid stack.
Red, we're not proposing to change any of the landscaping. The landscaping plan stays the same.
Landscaping's the same, yep. Yep, it should be, will definitely be less visible than the previous system. I think that basically covers the improvements.
Is the battery material, in other words, the chemical makeup the same? Or is it different?
It's a lithium ion. Mike, you might be able to speak a little bit more to that.
Hi, Mike Conway, Electrical Engineer from Borrego. They're very similar. They're both lithium ion batteries. The previous proposal was nickel-manganese-cobalt as the sort of compounds that make up the lithium ion battery. This one is iron and a phosphate. It's more, I think what Greg was saying, all across the board, fire safety has improved on these products. The actual battery itself is more heat tolerant as well. That's the sort of main improvement in going from the nickel battery to the iron battery.
But still lithium ion.
There's an umbrella of things that fall under lithium ion. These are both lithium ion. They just, the metals that are in it change.
Anything in the safety plan changing or required to change in terms of getting folks in there, having the right materials on site so they understand what to do and when to do it?
So it's two things. I believe the resolution, when we met with the fire department, we looked at two different things. One was the circulation and the clear view for the fire department. That doesn't change. As Greg said, it's actually individual cubes now. And as far as the training and all of that, that's still required by the resolution at the time we install. So all that will be updated as necessary. But at the end of the day, it's still the same, the same type of procedures that were all in the safety plan. And that was originally made a condition. We're not asking for any changes to that.
If there is a discharge of the powder, the inert powder, is there still a, has Matt recommended cleanup on it? What is the?
I mean, if there was, that whole cube would have to be replaced. So they would just take that, take it out and replace it.
If you remember last time, the big concern was the Novac started out as a liquid.
You can just speak on that.
Novac started out as a liquid, but we had given all the information showing that it would become an aerosol when it was released. But nevertheless, the board still wanted to make sure that the containers had enough space at the bottom. So in case there was an accidental leak, even though it wouldn't happen, it would still become an aerosol. We would have that covered. Now we don't even need to do that. Now it's the aerosol. So that's what makes it a lot safer. And again, the concern was is because the area was in the wetland buffer, not in the wetlands, but in the buffer, and we were cleaning up that whole back area. So that's, we had a long discussion on that.
So this looks like a collection of smaller self-contained units as opposed to the five container-style containment units?
There's the other one.
Okay.
Takes up less space?
Yes.
At least forty feet.
Less ground disturbance, less space with the overall compound area. Lower in height, so less visible, but we're still keeping the same landscaping plan. That again, I know we went through a lot of effort with Mel and the board and the staff on.
And it hasn't gotten any closer to the stream or?
Is the concrete pad smaller too?
Um, it's, overall it is, yeah.
Two hundred square feet less.
Yeah.
It's one larger pad compared to five smaller ones, but yes, overall the footprints.
Do the individual containment units speak in any way to the higher safety? In other words, is there less ability for any emergency to transfer to the next battery cell, the next battery cell? Since they're individual?
It's less, yeah. It's less likely. I mean, that's the specific goal of the grid stack. Yeah, and then each, yeah, each individual cube will have its own detection to, you know, to the fire department.
Well, I think it's a positive development for the project. It's good for us, you know, for the town to have the latest technology on these sites. Only question in my mind is what level of review do we need to give the modifications? If we can approve a modification and keep the same conditions and goals on there, then perhaps that's what we need to do. Do we need a referral out on the safety aspect?
Yeah, I think it should go back to the fire guys for their look. I'm sure that they'll be happy and agree that it's a more safe situation, but I think that they need to take a look at it. We'll take a more in-depth look at it to make sure that, you know, that we don't see anything that is modified in a way or hasn't been modified in a way that should be, just to get that general aspect of it. But I think, you know, a lot of the legwork has already been done here and that this is actually becoming a little bit of a better situation for essentially what is the same operation. So I don't anticipate anything, you know, too difficult to get by here.
Just from a procedural perspective, the way your code is drafted, we need to have a public informational and a public hearing on the amendments, even though they're positive and they're minimizing their impact. So if we wanna move the project along, we should probably schedule a public informational, schedule it tonight for a meeting in December so they can get the process going.
We have to do an informational hearing?
Yeah.
I thought that was an optional thing that we did. It wasn't?
No, not the way the code is written.
Do they have to be separate hearings?
Yeah.
And there's no way to waive that because it is just an amendment to the plan?
No, the code, the land development code requires a public hearing for any change to a site plan, both public informational and public hearing.
So can we give them an informational on December sixth and then the twenty-sixth?
Can you get that out notice in time? No, I didn't think so.
I already noticed. It had to go out already for the December sixth.
Yeah.
So you did or you didn't?
No, I already have done it for other projects for that meeting. I mean, it's, that was last.
It's too late for the December sixth.
Yeah, it was last week.
So the twenty-second is your first shot.
So let's do that. Get it on the earliest meeting we can. Meantime, we'll get the referral out and get the report back on the modifications and go from there.
Who handles the referral to the fire department?
Does that? That comes through us and we send it over to?
You guys take care of that.
Okay?
Okay. So let's vote ourselves into a regular session, schedule a public informational, and then go back, close the regular session and go back to the.
Okay, I have a motion to open a special session.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I need a motion to set the hearing?
Yes.
And what day are we looking at? December?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
Motion to set the public informational hearing up for December twentieth.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want to do granted nulls while you have it open and put that vote in? Because that one you were gonna have to do at your next meeting.
I thought we were shooting for January on that one.
Yeah, they've got a lot of work to do, so.
I would, we can wait on that. All right, any other business on this one? All right, motion to close the special session?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You took your things.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Nadine's Restaurant. This is a further discussion on a special use permit for property located at seven-one-five Sawmill River Road. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Keith Stoudenhart with Cronin Engineering, representing the applicant, Nadine's Restaurant. I don't know, do you have it on the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We met with this board via Zoom back in May or June to talk about the project. Nadine's Restaurant is on Sawmill River, seventeen, seven-fifteen Sawmill River Road. They received a permit from the building department to operate an outdoor seating area. And back in May, when we last spoke, we are looking to get a special permit issued from this board for the next year. Since the meeting, we did meet with staff, met with the town planners, the town engineer at the site to go over the site, and we all know the site's pretty tight. We did receive some information from the police department. Since two thousand and sixteen, there have only been six accidents within a half mile radius of this site. Nothing related to this restaurant. There was a couple deer hits, a couple signs, some, I think a tree. But nothing related to patrons of this site. So the outdoor seating is quite frankly keeping the restaurant open right now. More people are desirous of eating outside, even though it's chilly and cold, than eating inside. So I can have the owner explain that situation so that we can have a better understanding of the business right now. This is Pam.
I'm Pamela Nadine Shinley.
Hello.
Hi.
Did you step over to the mic, Pam?
Okay. Our outdoor dining has kept us afloat. If it wasn't for that, we would not survive. It's open all year round. Ninety percent of our customers, even tonight, have a party of five. The other day, ten people. Families come together here. They feel safe. They wanna be outside in the air. It's keeping the restaurant alive, you know? And even in the winter, we have the propane heaters. People wanna be outside. With the new COVID coming and all, people are still scared. I can't survive with just indoor dining anymore because it's getting less and less. And without our outdoor dining, it's, you know, it would devastate us. And people love it, the community. It's great for families. It's clean, it's spacious. The parking, you know, we do the best we can. You know, we're negotiating with the neighbors, you know, we can use their lot. So, but it's been clean, no accidents. Everybody, you know, pretty much they'll wait for a parking space. Or we do the buddy system where people are almost done. We'll pull their car out and they'll park in their space. So it's been good for us. And we, you know, you hear it all over. We need the outdoor dining. It's special. It's a very, you know, uplifting place, and people need that right now. And we're just asking, you know, little more, please.
You know, just keep in mind that this, you're on for a special use permit before us tonight. That means that there are certain criteria we need to look at. It's not, it's not something we're gonna say, no, we don't want you to have the outdoor.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, I'm just.
Of course we do. You're entitled to it if you meet the requirements and we address the impacts of what you're proposing to do. So since you were here last time, there were a couple of issues that I think were raised, rather technical questions. Have those been addressed this time around? Or are we, in effect, where are we since you were here? You know, we had some things going on in May that I can, looking at our minutes.
May was our first meeting with this board. I'm not sure procedurally, that was just an informational meeting or a work session. As far as the technical issues, I'm not sure what you're referring to. There's not much we can do on this site. The site is what it is. It's a small site. It has parking in the front. There's nothing we can really do to change that. We are, they are in negotiations with the owners across the street to see if we can grab some parking spaces, lease from them or get an easement from them to park some cars on the other side of the street. The owners are toying with the idea of valet parking, but right now valet parking is not something that people want strangers getting in their car and moving their cars. So that's something that we're also looking at as well. But I'm not sure what the technical issues you're referring to.
Well, it was site distance and the parking, I think.
Well, like I said, you know.
That we've been talking about in the parking configuration. I think when we did a site visit, we also talked about a little bit of the lighting to increase any potential, you know, safety enhancements. So there was things of that nature to be looked at.
Lighting, lighting of the parking lot?
Of the parking lot, I think there's a light down at the extreme corner. And I don't know that you have one closer. I forget exactly what it was because we were out there in May, but, you know, we can revisit that. But I think those were some of the issues that we talked about.
John, did we determine that parking on one-eighteen is legal?
I think it's legal.
Right.
Yeah. Whether it's desirable and whether.
Well, no, but I mean, technically, a technicality would be legal or illegal. And if it's legal,
Right.
then people could park smartly, as has been being done, right along one-eighteen. I mean, other solutions might be better, but if people can park on one-eighteen, right, we want.
Well, you have to, you guys have to make the determination that the seventy seats and whatever exist inside, whether or not there's varying times of use or whether or not it's seasonable, that you have met the parking requirement under the code to whatever extent that you're able to and that if you haven't met it, that you have determined that there's not a safety issue in that regard by virtue of that, so. So.
I feel safer parking on one-eighteen than I do in the parking lot by Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes. But the, you can't, you can't approve a number of parking spots that are not, that are on a state road. You can't use that to accommodate the parking requirements, basically, the technical point that I'm making. Okay.
Well, like we said out in the field that day when we were out there, I think we were out there in June. There hasn't been any incidents, and everything's been operating nicely for the year that they had it since they got the permit back in two thousand and twenty. And we hope, we expect that to continue. The indoor restaurant, the outdoor restaurant is, the seating area is not an overflow for the indoor. So don't think that the indoor gets full and everybody goes outside. Actually, people are preferring to be outside. So it's not like the restaurant's full on both sides, indoor and outdoor. It's a choice now that the patrons have to sit inside or sit outside. And like the owner said, you know, the outdoor seating area is saving the restaurant, so.
And so there's not a situation, if at all, or very rare, and I'm suggesting that where you have a full complement indoor and a full complement outdoor. Is that correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You're not going to see the restaurant occupied to a point where both the outdoor seating is full and the indoor seating is full. Is that?
Correct. That's correct.
Is that what's happening?
Yes. Right, yes.
Okay, so in that regard, would you be, consider having a cap on the actual number of patrons that can patronize the restaurant at any given time?
I think we can, yes.
In a reasonable sense?
Yes, yes.
John, how many parking spots are there right now?
Sixteen.
About sixteen or seventeen.
And what would the code require?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the, um, I didn't look to see what the, um, the square footage of the patron area is, but it's, for the patron area, it's fif- for every fifty square feet, you need a parking space. So.
And.
That, that's why.
Parking, I don't see that on the plan, you know?
And how many, how many spots are you looking at trying to lease from the neighbor?
Uh, well, obviously as many as we can get, but.
Do you know how many they?
I would say between five and ten maybe. At the most.
So there would be more than twenty-six, five, twenty-six.
Right.
I, I can't say the last time I was there was a fall, well, early fall evening and everyone was outside, there was nothing inside.
Right.
So it definitely is.
Yeah, of course.
You know.
And you have about fifty or so inside, is that right?
I think it's about fifty-four inside.
Four inside, right.
Yeah.
Um, at the last meeting, um, my notes indicate that there was a question about the septic system and its capacity.
Right, so, um, the system, system's been being monitored, the system is operating fine. The design flow for fifty-four seats would be over two thousand gallons a day. And we've been monitoring the water every day for over a year and, and, and the site is actually averaging about, where's my number? I think it's, uh, since May of this year to the end of October, they're averaging sixty-eight gallons a day usage, which far less than the health department design load would be. And the system is being monitored, we have a view, view ports and we're looking at it to make sure everything's operating fine. So they use minimal water there. So in our opinion, the septic system is, is, is functioning fine and operating fine.
Okay. You have any concerns, other concerns?
None yet. No.
You, you'll submit that stuff?
The water data?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have any other concerns or can we move?
Those are the general concerns that I think need to be looked at. I don't know if you guys have, did you guys do a site visit in the spring or individually or?
I don't think so.
If you consider having dinner there, a site visit, yes.
Well, that's. That, that's one way to tick off two things at once, that's for sure. Yeah, I think a site visit is a good idea as well, so.
Okay.
And you could do that individually, I think.
What's the next step then?
Well, I think we'll get some of the submissions from him and we can work through some of the answers for some of the things that occurred in the May meeting.
Right.
And we'll get those into a, a written form and then you can move from there.
Could we schedule a public hearing for this?
They could, I mean, that's up to, up to the board.
You feel we have.
I mean, it's cause the, the end of the year is coming fast.
When is your permit for the outdoor expire?
She believes it's the end of the year. I thought it was the end of the year, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I haven't seen, I don't recall. I think I have the permit with me. So hopefully we'd like to see if we can continue with the, uh, outdoor seating through the holidays, so.
I see the, uh, the president of our chamber of commerce sitting in the, standing in the back and he, I, I know he spoke about maybe even seeing if the town, a while ago, if the town would extend it with the COVID numbers still on the rise, so.
Right.
It may.
Is that something you guys would do?
That's how we did it originally, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. That, that is correct. Um, the, the difference here is that I think these folks would like to get a permanent.
We'd like to get a permanent.
That's what you're here before us for, correct, yeah.
Right, yes.
But, but it may give them a little more breathing.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it, that's possibly gives them the, the ability to continue on through January if, if this isn't in place by that time.
And we'd be agreeable to, like, having the permit revisited once a year, come before the board to renew the per, the special permit.
I think this permanent permit is how long? Special use permit for this, if we grant it, would be how long?
Well, on the, in these particular cases, you s- you've, you've done them, uh, you may start out with one year or two years and then eventually you, you go to five years.
Okay.
So in other words, you'd see, you know, you do the one year to see how it goes, how, if there's any issues, we've done that in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
So we are looking at December twentieth if we wanted to proceed with this, is that the earliest one?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be public informational.
Public informational hearing, do we need a resolution to schedule that?
We will, so we'll have to go back into regular session and then schedule a public hearing and then close the regular session.
All right, I have a motion to, uh, re-enter regular session on this?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to schedule a public informational hearing then on Nadine's Restaurant application for December twenty.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've got that scheduled, motion to close the session, regular session.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're up and running.
All right, so public hearing for December twentieth and will you resolution available?
It's gonna be a public informational hearing.
Um.
Which is a preliminary hearing to get this project out.
Gotcha.
Uh, to the ears of the public so they know that it's taking place.
Okay.
And that's all it does.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
One more. Number nine on the agenda is thirty-six sixty-eight Barger Street. This is a, uh, site plan approval request for an existing site and three hundred, proposed three hundred square foot office on one point four acres in the C four zone. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Bertay, uh, representing ARQ PC, I'm a civil engineer in state of New York, how you doing, John? Um, so we are in the C four zone, one point four acre parcel, we're looking to convert the, uh, or we have a tenant for the garage in that center portion to operate as a mechanic. And we are proposing twelve parking spaces, just, so we're just gonna be restriping existing pavement, um, for that use. We're also proposing to, uh, for the storage facility in the center, the material storage, um, looking to install a, a, uh, facility that he can has, have a bathroom, like a trailer, uh, for an office and a, uh, bathroom for his, uh, workers and reception. And, uh, maybe move some bins around just to, uh, reconfigure some things to make it a little bit more efficient. Um, and dress up the front with, uh, from some portion of a mason wall, masonry wall with a, like a short fence on top, no higher than, uh, what's allowed by code, but just something to dress it up. So we'd like to, uh, hear any comments that you have. So if I might give you a little background here, this is a site, longstanding site, it's been operating pretty much as approved from seventy-one, seventy-two. All of the buildings have existed for the most part since then. Uh, it approved a large shop, which is on the southern part of the property, which still exists, operates, uh, and it approved, uh, two small buildings. One supports the material storage yard, one is basically an office for sometimes a contractor type, and the other one is a garage. Uh, the office is really move-in condition, uh, no changes whatsoever, no issues with change of use. Uh, the garage, uh, is, been used variously as a garage and other things. It wa- uh, is proposed to be used now as a public garage, in other words, a repair shop, which is allowed in the zone as of right. Uh, and the situation here in respect to the garage is that the, um, ability for the applicant on that particular property to get a CO is considered a little bit of a change of use, even though it's allowed in the zone. And for the building department to have something to sink their teeth into, they need some approval, verifying this site and also requiring that the site be brought back to where it was in terms of its original approval, which is mostly in terms of site amenities, the, the, uh, striping. In other words, now we'll have a plan that shows how the site operates around and in support of the public garage, and that's really all that is essentially needed here. So it's really just bringing forth, um, the, the use and that the use will still be able to, uh, be supported by the site as it was in, in, in its original condition. Although the site's so old that there's no longer striping and things of that nature, really, so. So that's why we wrote this resolution for your consideration, so that the, um, public garage can move forward, being that it's in, uh, allowed use in the zone. Uh, and the more extensive changes, although they are minor by com- by comparison, to the material storage yard with moving some bins around, doing some beautification up front, getting the signs done, will come kind of in a phase two situation. So that's the situation here and that's why you have this proposed resolution, uh, and that the issues here are about the two portions of the site, which if you look through the plans, they've broken these things up in kind of areas to help clarify what's happening.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, comments from the board?
Well, I think it's, whatever they're gonna do there is gonna be a, an improvement. I've been accustomed to it for a long time. And, uh, it's a convenience for everybody.
Yeah, it is.
And now that you got the new mobile station.
Right.
Track more people.
Yep.
I, I'm all for it.
What's meant by a public garage?
A garage, it's a regular, uh, repair, repairs.
Public garage.
Bring my car there and go underneath and change my oil?
No, no, no.
Yeah, it's, it's defined in code as, as a, you know, a normal repair shop for automobiles and that the general public brings.
Oh, okay, so it's still a place of business.
It's not a, it's not a parking garage or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it's a specific definition in our code.
Okay. All right, so we don't have to do any particular, you know, further review process or hearings or anything on this?
I don't think so.
Yeah, not, not on affirming this use for this particular building, which the building's not changing, the.
Right.
Site operation's not changing, it's really affirming the site operation and giving these guys a guide to how they have to operate the site, which is in conjunction with the already approval, the, uh, the existing approval.
Okay. Motion to open a special session?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any further discussion on this for the record?
None.
All right, do I have a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution that's before you tonight?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Paul, we'll continue with the material storage yard issues.
Okay.
You know.
Would that require a public hearing?
That may, I wanna, I wanna go through some of the things that you're proposing.
Okay.
I'll talk with Jim and we'll see.
Okay.
The exact things that we have to do for that.
And how that.
And a small addition to the building, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
All those issues are a little bit different.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I got a question.
You gotta step up.
Is, yeah, I'm Marcelo Santucci, how are you? On the part where the storage yard is gonna be?
Yes.
So, um, I just wanted to see if it was possible to start selling the material as of today or tomorrow, or do I have to wait?
Uh, well, you are operating under, that was operating as it is under an existing approval?
Yes.
So I would say yes, but I think you need to speak with the building inspector to see what he says, so it's not a change of use, but it's up, it's, he needs, he, you need to get his input as well. Uh, in terms of the changes, those things, you, uh, obviously you can't do those changes until you get them approved.
No, that's, that's fine, I just, I'm, I'm afraid to bring in all the material and then, you know, all of a sudden, what are you doing?
Well, why don't you ca- call me in the next couple of days, we'll, we can try to set a staff meeting with the building inspector if you care to and just get all our heads together and we get it out on the same page together.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, yes.
Have a Thanksgiving.
I'd like to, on behalf of the board, wish everyone a good holiday, good Thanksgiving. And any other business? Motion, motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion, second. Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, have a great holiday, everyone.